Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for the evening of Monday, June 3rd. At this time, I'd ask you to please silence your cell phones, set it to vibrate to include notifications, phone calls, gaming, online media, whatever noise may come out of your phone. If you could please silence it so that we can all hear what's going on. At this time, I invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Future meetings, we have the Planning Commission meeting, June 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Office and on Zoom. Board of Commissioners meeting, July 15th, 2024, 7:00 PM in the Town Office and on Zoom. And we have Citizens Advisory Committee meeting on July 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM in the Town Office. Commissioners or Mr. Mayor or Town Staff, do we have any meetings that is not currently on the list that we should announce?
Yes, we do. We have a Board of Appeals meeting, June 11th, at 7:00 PM here at the Town Office and Zoom.
Board of Appeals meeting, June 11th, Town Office and on Zoom at 7:00 PM? Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, any, any other ones that I've, that we need to announce? Okay, hearing none. Moving right into it, we're going to look at approving two sets of meeting minutes, starting with May 6, 2024. I assume you've had your agenda pack and I've had time to review it. Is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes for May 6, 2024? Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Any further discussion on the meeting minutes for May 6? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving on to the meeting minutes for May 20th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 20th, 2024?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second? Second goes to Commissioner Sweeney by hair. Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions regarding the meeting minutes for May 20? May 20? Nope. Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I did that rather fast, but I'm pretty sure everybody said aye. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, from there, we're gonna move on to the police reports.
Good evening. All right, so police report for May. Start with any leave, just eight of the holiday annual and two days of sick. No changings in staffing this month. Training and special assignments, myself and DFC Hanukkah both had just normal police one training online. We had our spring firearms qualifications and then special assignment for the Mother's Seaton Carnival, which was successful, didn't have, didn't seem to have any issues. So it turned out really good. No fleet issues, other than maybe Hanukkah's car that didn't start, but nothing major. Productivity, handled 127 calls for service to include six arrests, 20 traffic stops. I tried to look for anything exciting for on a cause worth highlighting. I didn't have anything for y'all, unfortunately. Sorry. Like I said, no issues at the carnival. And other than that, I want to have a happy summer. This is gonna be my last town meeting until the fall because, like I said, me and my wife are expecting a baby to come early next month. So there will be a temporary guy here while I'm gone. I'm not sure who yet, but it will be covered. So is there any questions in regards to that or anything?
Yeah, whoever it is, can you remind them we have Heritage Day on the 29th?
Yeah, and if, if I'm, my wife's not due till July 4th, so it's around there. So if, if I'm able to be here, I will. If not, then we'll, it'll make sure it's covered.
Thank you.
Well, we do have fireworks on the 29th, so that could be her day.
True.
Yeah.
True.
Well, congratulations on, on your, on your little one that's coming. And I hope every mom and baby are going to be happy and healthy.
Appreciate it.
Any further comments?
A little superstitious about names, but you might want to stay away from Frank or Cliff or Tim.
Don't worry, it's none of them.
Bad call.
Do I hear a motion? All right. Thank you very much and best of luck.
Thank you.
From there, we're moving on to the Town Manager's Report. Turning over to Ms. Willetts.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager Report from April of 2024. I'll just highlight some key areas. Related to streets, staff cleaned debris up from some accidents on Main Street. They also cold patched potholes on West Lincoln and Cedar Avenue. And we had a contractor blacktop some water leaks and sewer line patches. Related to the pool or to the parks, staff worked at the pool to get ready for the new season. It opened, successfully opened Memorial Day weekend. Contractor assisted with prepping all the ball fields in Memorial Park. Related to water, we treated in, for wastewater, excuse me. We treated an average of 909,419 gallons per day. Consumed an average of 285,076, which meant 70.12% of the wastewater was wild water. The majority of this came from staff pumping down the lagoons, preparing for the next storm in April. We had no spills of untreated sewage. We did exceed the plant's, the basin capacity 25 days. We received 4.2 inches of precipitation. We currently have a surplus of 7.92 inches over the last six months. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. You'll see the well depths for April as well as the monthly well depths for the month, or for the year of 2023. And then on page 19, the average well depths to date for 2024. Water production and consumption, the amount of backwash water in the month of April was roughly 8.7%. You'll see where the majority of the well, water came from the wells at 70%. One note was hydrants were flushed in April, so the numbers are slightly higher than normal. We estimate 608,000 gallons was used during flushing. Trash, trash pickup remains Mondays during the month of June. I highlighted some of the meetings I attended in April and some noteworthy items. As I mentioned, staff flushed hydrants with the assistance of Merrill Rural Water, who also conducted the flow tests on our hydrants. Staff and the contractor fixed the leaking main water valve at the pump station. Staff also fixed a water leak on North Seaton Avenue. Our superintendent attended a Christ Management class for water and sewer. The LG Sonic was put back in the lake April 29th. The annual 2023 Consumer Confidence Report was submitted to MDE. They, it will, it's currently on the website now and it will be mailed out with your June 30th water, sewer and trash bill. Leak detection specialist is in town for two days and found two leaks. One has been fixed so far. And then, just of note, town qualified for a grant due to meeting operating limits at the sewer plant in 2023. And we collaborated with a contractor install new section of sewer pipe in Emmett Gardens.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments regarding the report? Commissioner Hoover?
Commissioner Hoover. So the staff notified, my staff was notified that you qualify for the grant because we operated at, I guess, at or over our limits for the sewer plant. So what is that grant? What is that?
It's typically a $30,000 grant that goes into the operating costs at the sewer plant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments for Ms. Willetts? Okay. All right, moving on to the Grant Administrators Report. Oh, there you are. I was looking for you.
Hi, good evening. This is the Grants Administrator Report as of May 29th, 2024. I'm just gonna highlight a few items from the report. So on page 21, I did complete the, one of my grants from 2022, so I was thankful for that. The final report was submitted. For the next one down, Grants 2022-6 and 22-7, that was, that's for the bathroom concession stand project. And that's, that bid, the site prep is to come before the board tonight. We also collected bids for the Rainbow Lake parking lot, which is further down on that page, and that's to come before the board tonight. On the next page, let's see, Grant 23-18 and 24-3, which is the DePaul Street Water Line. We had our pre-construction meeting this week. We're currently waiting on MDE to bring the project before the Maryland Board of Public Works, and we anticipate breaking ground July, the week of July 8th, but that's not set in stone yet. Nothing else on that page. The next page, we got one newly awarded grant. And that is for advertising Emmitsburg as a tourism destination to help bring in tourism. And that was just a small grant of $3,179.33. And we still have about seven grants pending. And then the next page, page 24 of the Agenda Packet. There's two grants that I'm applying for this month. One is the Community Development Block Grant for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement. And that's what we have a public carrying on tonight. That'll be $800,000. And then the other grant I'm applying for this month is for community legacy of $707,061, and that'll be addressed in the resolution tonight, Agenda Item Number Three. And that is also for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement. Are there any questions?
Questions, Commissioners? No? I don't have a question so much as something I was thinking about. A couple weeks ago, Mayor Davis gave us a list of all the different House bills and things that have been coming before the state, and I saw one of them that mentioned how the state's trying to make it a priority to get communication boards in on playgrounds. And what I mean by that is for children who are nonverbal. So since it was being recognized at the state as something that should be on our ADA playgrounds, I didn't know. And maybe this is something for Parks and Rec Commissioner O'Donnell to look into, just to keep our eyes open if there's any grants that might allow us to install a communication board with, and I can give you more information on what that is.
Is that the board with the, you identify your feelings on it?
It's more than that. It does have picture symbols, but it has what's called core words. So the words, 90% of the words that you use every day would be in there. Not so much like other words like Gladiator that maybe you'll say a few times in your life. So, but there are some standard ones that I think are already out there on playgrounds, but I thought it would be fun to, a nice idea to have on our ADA playground if we have any grants that might retain. So just something to keep your eye out for.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Commissioner, Commissioner comments. Every time I say parking enforcement, they say it's just there for our benefit. I mean, Town Planner's Report? Yes. Thank you. Town Planner's Report. Sorry about that, Nigella.
Good evening. This is the Town Planner's Report. I'll just highlight a few things. A few permit applications were processed last month. Oh, okay, sorry. So on some development updates, Gettysburg Smoothie opened on May 22nd. It's located at 5 East Main Street. Penny Mart is a grocery and deli store where you can buy food at an affordable price, and they're based in Hagerstown. And the town had a meeting with the owner last month. And we actually got the zoning permit applications this morning. So once that's done, the change of use and the signed permits, they'll go through the county and then we'll have a Penny Mart in town. Federal Stone's under construction. Seaton Village, we're waiting on their plaids so we can sign them and waiting on the fee and lieu for the forest conservation. Emmitsburg Distillery, they recently updated their improvement plan and that's currently being reviewed. Christ Community Church has their site plan approved and we're awaiting the improvement plan. Mount St. Mary's University, East Wing improvements, the plan has been approved. We're awaiting signatures of the DDA easement, which is one of the items on the agenda tonight. Emmett Ridge, the sketch plot has been reviewed by the town and we have some ongoing discussions regarding setback requirements. So they've applied for a variance request to reduce the lot size by 25% for that area. And that Board of Appeals meeting is on June 11th, as mentioned earlier. I'll skip down to stormwater management. We're coordinating with the Darts of Charity and to establish easements that's needed for the stream link to start planting on their property. This project will help the town's MS4 credits. And I'll mention some grants, the Community Legacy Grant for the Emmitsburg Fassad Improvement project. So the Sustainable Community, so work group, they finalized their recommendations and some of the applications has been approved by the, the DHCD. Grant agreements for some of those have been mailed and one applicant had withdrawn their application, so there's some extra money left. So we're accepting more applications now. We're working on the comprehensive plan. We had two meetings one with the residents of the Lincoln on the park and one at a rep, at NTC to gather their input because we're trying to get as much public input as possible for a comprehensive plan. And these were some of the meetings that I attended during the month of May.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. The Chantel Glow Fiber Meeting, any timeline come forward from them regarding their start on infrastructure?
I'm sorry, what month is?
All they said was 2025.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And other one, sorry. Oh, how are we advertising or how are we doing outreach for the money that the grant was withdrawn from for the block grants?
Website and Facebook.
Great. Okay. Anyone following up with you yet?
One person so far.
Oh, good. Okay. All right. Yeah, definitely get the word out on that. That's so huge. Thank you.
Is there a deadline for that? I'm, I didn't look.
We haven't set a deadline.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Additional questions? Commissioner Turquist?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the Community Legacy Grant. Have we always had a 10,000 match or is that something new?
We've always had a 10,000 match.
Okay. I have two questions and a comment. My comment is, I stopped by Gettysburg Smoothie and it was delicious. So if you haven't been there, I highly recommend it. And I know, question was about the Penny Mart. I know you mentioned this before, but where, where's the location that they're looking at again, somewhere on Main?
9 East Main Street where the dentist office used to be.
Gotcha. Thank you. And for the Seaton Village, awaiting signatures, being lieu of for forest conservation. That's where they give you money instead of planting the trees, correct?
Correct.
Does that go into, what, what happens to that money? Does it get set aside so that we do, we are able to use it towards those initiatives?
That is correct. We have a forest conservation fund and in the past, we didn't have enough money for the projects that we planned for, but we should in the future, given that we're getting this money.
Okay, great. Thank you. Actually, one more question. In the Board of Appeals for the variance, if that passes the Board of Appeals, does that come back to the Board of Commissioners or no? No. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions, comments? Okay. So I did not miss anything that time. It's because, okay. Now we're ready for Commissioner comments. We'll start at the end. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Couple new pieces. I don't mean to repeat myself, but I'd hope that the program director, sorry, the new program director from the library downstairs would be here. Ms. Brier, I don't see her here. But she is a person who was promoted from within. She's a veteran of FCPL. And she is very eager to bring programs to town. So if you're interested in seeing something for young people or for adults, and she emphasized that for adults also, please get in touch with her. Her name is Deb Sprier. She is an experienced person and has been in our, our library more than a few times before her being promoted to this position. So she knows the town reasonably well. Moving from there, there will be a large book sale as a fundraiser for the summer programs at the library that will occur next weekend. And that's here in the building. The Tour de Frederick, the bicycle event that brings literally thousands of riders to Frederick County. One of the loops will come through Emmitsburg this coming weekend, so please anticipate cycling traffic in the early morning through the early afternoon. There is what, well, do you want me to also blend in the Parks and Recs report? Or does that trip over your agenda or?
No, that doesn't trip. But I mean, I think I used to do that with Citizens Advisory.
So I will plug that in. The, the meeting, we had three members of the team, so we didn't have a, we didn't have a quorum, but I'll go through just quickly what we covered. We talked about the book walk and the libraries agreed to update it more frequently, but there will need to be a volunteer to help with changing the placards in the, the reading stations. The soccer gentleman for Emmitsburg Soccer, I'm sorry, Emmitsburg Football, AKA Soccer. They did come and present and they were very enthusiastically met by the, the committee members who were in place. They're excited to hear about the concession stand that is in process in Community Park and the new bathrooms and the new facility there. They were very eager to see that through. They're eager to see us, see it through, pardon me. They were very enthusiastic about the parking lot that's coming to Rainbow Lake as not everyone there is a rider, but we have a lot of walkers and fisherman and fisherpeople, I should say. And they were excited about the Red Trail rebuild. The other piece is a reminder that in July, there are going to be two disc golf events. I met this evening with the disc golf folks. The second one, again, to reiterate, is a Senior Olympics event. It's the first time they've done disc golf. And they chose to do it in Emmitsburg because they felt that town staff and the board and the mayor are very supportive of their efforts. This is a really good tourism thing for us as it gives us a lot of positive exposure on a bigger level. So with that, I'll conclude my report about Parks and Rec as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a quick question regarding the Senior Olympic event that's coming. Do we, I don't know that we've ever done something like that before. When we have big events in town, is there any way that we can somehow offer discounts to some of the businesses in town when they're here? Or I know that's a bigger project, but it's just something to think about.
So in, in the past, for when we, when we've had the bigger like mountain biking competitions on the mountain, I've approached businesses and they've mostly been very enthusiastic because it brings more people, you know, more customers in. It's just a question of my walking around and having those conversations, which I do intend to do. In regards to supporting them, they said, hey, is the town supportive of this? And like, the town thinks it's a great idea. But you know, if you have a specific wish list, let us know, but do it like in the next five days or 10 days. So that way the town can move forward on it or the town has the chance to unfortunately say no if we have to. But maybe we can, you know, we can do some workarounds. And Commissioner Sweeney, I believe they're gonna contact the Lions Club regarding food service there if they have not already.
They have not.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try to make connections between you and their leadership.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turquist?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes, I just want to reiterate that there is, we had a tournament this past weekend of, of baseball here in town that went really well. We had good weather. Everybody enjoyed the town. They liked the facilities a lot. And these kids were from all over the place, Pennsylvania, Virginia, New Jersey. They came from all over the place. And they will be here again this weekend to play. New, new groups were coming in this weekend, so the town will be full with bikers and, and baseball in both parks. So keep your eye out for them, please. And Heritage Day is the 29th of the month. Come out and have fun. Everything's free except for the food. So, and pools open, free to the public. So come on out and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoover?
I want to add to it is to congratulate the Vision Who's Fire Company for officially putting in their new fire truck into service, Seaton and Tower Six. So they've been able to purchase that truck and pay and pay for it in full. With the support of this community and the greater MSPer community, I should say as well, for the activities as two combined. So it's a very, MSPer Firehouse has been a very good fire company for the town as well as for the, for the state, as well as really nationally well-known because of the Fire Academy here. So kudos to the fire company and keep up the good work, Mr. Mayor. I'll pass the message over, please do.
Thank you. I have just a few comments before passing it over to Mayor Davis. One is, I want to wish all the fathers or anyone who's listening, who plays a fatherly role, whether you're an uncle or a big brother or are hopeful to be a father one day, a happy Father's Day. And two announcements with upcoming events, we do have a Flag Day Ceremony coming up on June 14th at 7:00 PM in the Eugene Myers Park. For those of you who might be interested. Also, we have our Farmer's Market opening this Friday from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. We do have adjusted hours. We tried to go long last year, didn't quite work, so we're trying to go a little bit shorter, find that sweet spot, but please know it is the operation hours are 3:00 to 7:00 PM. Looking forward to seeing you there. More people there means more customers, means more vendors will keep coming back and pretty soon it's gonna be a destination spot in Emmitsburg, I'm telling you. And then last but not least, I don't know if you've been, anybody's been watching the, the local news about the FCPS budget being 40 to 50 million dollars in the hole. Having said that, there's definitely things on the chopping block that may or may not be done being chopped. So if you know of anybody in Emmitsburg who is going to sign up for pre-K at Emmitsburg Elementary, please encourage them to do so as soon as possible. That has already started. By getting our numbers up, we can show that the program is indeed needed here and we can keep that program in Emmitsburg. We don't want to give any reason to have that program on the chopping block. So please spread the word. And that is all. Thank you. Yes.
I do have one follow-up. Thank you. The Farmer's Market's starting up. So the Citizens Advisory, one of the state things they had was the, put up the banner. I honestly don't know was, if they were or we're not coming up. I'll ride by and look, but I don't.
So the sign out front that you asked about, that's one-sided, so we didn't move it. E+ is making us two feather signs and 10-yard signs.
Okay.
That will be put up as soon as they're, I'm hoping, I think tomorrow, hopefully, if they're, they get their polls in.
I appreciate it. I think that, that'd be a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Davis?
Thanks. It's been a busy month of school graduations. Was able to attend several of those career days at both Emmitsburg Elementary and Sebillsville. And that's, that's always a bright part of this job. So it's, it kind of makes you want to keep coming back for more most days. For Flag Day, Commissioner Beau Politt will be speaking during that. She's, she's taking my place. And I think it's more appropriate that she does that, being from a military family and her, her father being one of the commanders at Fort Ritchie close to the time of the closing of that. I think it's very appropriate that, that she takes that role on for me. And thank you so much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Because I'll be at the beach and other meetings. School budget, I had it on my list also. One of the other things they're talking about adding is a fee for students to play sports. And they, they want to double that fee. So for any, any student that wants to play any type of, of sports in high school, the fee will be
student that wants to play any type of of sports in high school, the fee will be, I think, $205 a student. So if you have a student that plays three sports, that's $600 per per student, per family. And that's that's just totally ridiculous. It's and that's not counting the equipment they have to buy. And it will have an impact on families in our area. So with that, I've already reached out to the to the principal at Catoctin and told her to keep keep us in the loop with what's going on because I'll I want to lead a fundraising events to help offset the the cost for the students. Of course, with that in mind, she said that they the principals have been giving given no guidance on how they're supposed to address this because they know it's going to be an issue. But what do they do with these children that that can't afford to to pay? And our little high school, you know, they have enough trouble fielding fielding teams that that we want to step forward and try to support that. So with that, I think that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to public comments, I see we have four people signed up. If you are here to speak at our public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant, you can choose to speak now, but it would make more sense to wait until we get to that part in it in the agenda. So it's all packaged together as one one agenda item. In the meantime, I have Mr. Eric Sloan. Oh, okay. Thank you. And next we have Ms. Wendy Brubaker. When you come up, just make sure to state your name. And if you're in Emmitsburg or live in Emmitsburg or not.
Good evening, everyone. I see some familiar faces from years past, but if you don't know me already, my name is Wendy Brubaker. I'm the Director of Orientation at Mount St. Mary's University. And I have brought with me today, one of our Orientation's Student Assistants. She's a current student and I'll give her a chance to introduce herself when she comes up as well. But we'd like to share a little bit more about Party in the Park that we've already reserved to take place in August. And Claire will be sharing a little bit more, but for the last two years, Mount St. Mary's University has enjoyed a partnership with the Town of Emmitsburg to host Party in the Park during our move-in weekend for new students. The main goal was to introduce the students to the Emmitsburg community by traveling to the Eugene Myers Community Park for an evening of fun. The students had access to the pool. They played games with campus ministries, socialized over a picnic lunch with fellow students, enjoyed music and or friendly organized games with our Student Activities Office and Recreation and Wellness as well. They also participated in a community fair. The community fair was comprised of churches, businesses, community organizations from Emmitsburg and Thermon areas. Students had a bingo card as they stamped when they met each of the organizations, sometimes with a chance to win a raffle from that organization. But we also had the raffles for them as well. The groups gave out food samples, engaged in carnival-like games and had different giveaways. This gave students an opportunity to find businesses to patron, to work for, and also maybe to volunteer with. I personally have classes I teach on campus. So I've had students that I've experienced in my class. They've worked for the kombucha lady in Thermon, McDonald's hearing in Emmitsburg, and another student was volunteering at the fire department. So over 330 students attended last year's event and we received very positive feedback from the students. A lot of the positive feedback came from the involvement of the community fair. And we hope that you'll join us again this year. I'm going to ask Claire Ball, our Orientation Student Assistant, to share about this year's plans.
Thank you.
Hello, as Wendy stated, my name is Claire. I'm a rising senior at the mount and I'm studying psychology. It's also my second year working with orientation. On Saturday, August 17th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, we have numerous exciting activities for our new students during Party in the Park. They will have a chance to meet new friends, go for a swim, play some outdoor games such as three-on-three basketball games or dodgeball. We also have pickleball this year. Sponsored by our Recreation and Wellness Department, we will provide students with a picnic dinner and ice cream from Ripley's Eat It or Not. The main attraction of this event will be the businesses and organizations from the community that will table at the community fair. We are here tonight to share the news that this event is returning and ask you to participate. Not only will this start a conversation between you and our students, but it will also create a connection for our community to be stronger together. We would like to ask for your support with helping advertise this event and registering to participate. So please spread the word. Starting this week, Orientation Leaders and myself from the mount will be personally visiting businesses and community organizations to hand out flyers like this one here to learn more and sign up for the event. We have flyers for you to take home today. And if you're joining us virtually, we will leave some in the town office for you to pick up. In the event of rain, we will be holding Party in the Park with the Community Fair in the Arc at the Mount Emmitsburg Campus. If you have any questions, Wendy and I will stay after at the end of this meeting to answer them. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donald Sun. You're welcome. And that concludes our public comment list. Moving on to administrative business. Let me see if I can find it. The last meeting I was mentioning that Maryland Department of Transportation and the State Highway Administration, they were completing an investigation as far as whether the speed limit is beneficial or needs to be modified at the intersection of 140 and Tract Road. They did their research during the month of May and they did write back with their findings. And I just wanted to to read it officially so that we have it in our agenda. Okay, so what they found was, they said they completed an investigation to determine if additional traffic control measures or revision to the posted speed limit would be beneficial. This included collecting traffic volume and speed data for 48 continuous hours, inventorying existing traffic control devices, measuring site distance, analyzing crash history and conducting onsite observations. The results of the review revealed at the that the majority of the drivers are complying with the posted speed limit and that the crash history for the intersection is considered low when compared to intersections with similar characteristics. Traffic control devices along Maryland 140 approaching Tract Road include warning signs, which provide drivers with an indication that there is an intersection ahead. And they should be alert to the potential for vehicles entering and exiting the the intersection. They stated that during their review, they noted that the regulatory speed limit, which had been established through legal action transitions from 50 miles per hour to 40 miles per hour west of Tract Road. However, the speed limit signs in place when traveling eastbound currently reduce east of Tract Road. So in order to be consistent with the regulatory action and provide a 40 mile per hour speed limit through the Tract Road intersection, State Highway Administration will arrange to relocate the existing speed reduction warning signs and the 40 mile an hour limit signs to a point west of Tract Road. And they're expecting that the signs will be relocated by the end of June. They are hopeful that this is going to make a difference. And I I would assume after we give it some time with these new measures in place, we could always bring it back to their attention if we had ongoing concerns. Just wanted to pass that along. All right. Thank you. Next, we're moving on to the consent agenda. We have the filing of the 2023 Annual Planning Commission Report. Where is it? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You were waving at me and I was too busy looking at trying to go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so this is the Town of Emmitsburg Planning Commission Annual Report for the calendar year 2023. It's a required component of the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. This has been approved by the Planning Commission, the last meeting. It's a report based on the number of residential permits issued and any growth related changes. And if any planning related topics that have been addressed by the town, the Planning Commission. So it's a pretty straightforward report and it's already been approved by the Planning Commission. So it just needs to be filed with the Board of Commissioners. It is page 33.
All right, it's it's back this way. There it is. Thank you. Any, is there a motion to approve the filing of the 2023 Annual Planning Commission Report?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Any discussion on the Annual Planning Commission Report? There is no Oh, I'm sorry. This is consent. Yes, thank you. You're welcome. I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All against, please say nay. Any extensions?
Yeah, I'll abstain because I voted for it as part of the Planning Commission meeting.
Understood. Okay.
Vote a second time.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. So motion passes for in favor and Commissioner Turquest abstaining. Next, we move to the Treasurer's Report. We're back to you.
So the Treasurer's Report is on page 36 of your agenda package. Cash activity report as of May 23rd, 2024 is as follows. Cash balance of $10,512,803. Deposits of $346,565. Withdrawals $677,418. Operating balance going forward, $10,181,950. The fund breakdown as of May 23rd, we have 1.6 million in the general fund, 977,000 in our capital projects budget, our water fund $358,463. ARPA funds $2.8 million. Sewer funds $4.3 million. The top 10 checks are there on the page if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions on the Treasurer's Report? Nope. Okay, hearing none. Moving on. Thank you, Commissioner Turquest. Planning Commission Report, I guess. Does that go back to you, Commissioner?
Yeah, so we had just quickly, at our Planning Commission meeting, we discussed the timeline for the comprehensive plan. Meetings will continue for the remainder of the calendar year. We continued discussions on extending the growth boundary for Emmitsburg to extend a little bit beyond Tract Road. Those discussions are continuing. And we did just discuss the filing of the 2023 Annual Planning Commission Report, which was approved at the Planning Commission meeting. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions on the Planning Commission Report? Nope. Okay. Moving on to our agenda items. Agenda item number one is our Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing. Okay. So the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing is for the purpose of seeking public input on local community development, economic development, housing needs, proposed project activity, North Seaton Avenue waterline replacement and other community needs as needed. So at the meeting to discuss the Emmitsburg Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant Application has now started at 7:44 PM. And with that, I'm turning over to staff for presentation.
Thank you. This is the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing for the Fiscal Year 2025 Grant Application. And the project that's being proposed is the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project. The public hearing was advertised in English and Spanish as required per the grant in the Frederick News Post on May 23rd, 2024. The Community Development Block Grant Application requires that we discuss the project, local community development, economic development, housing needs, other community needs, the development of the CDBG funds available for state fiscal year 2025 and the range of activities that may be undertaken with the funds. So the funding will be used for construction and the replacement of the North Seaton Avenue Waterline, a severely tuberculated waterline located along North Seaton. The map shows the project area. Once the waterline is replaced, the contractor will repair the street and sidewalks by implementing the North Seaton Avenue Green Street Concept Plan from January 2021. The concept plan includes the repaving of the street and adding 2,080 square feet of permeable sidewalks, 4,040 square feet of bio retention planters, 17,000 square feet of native planting areas, 27 new street trees, 9,630 cubic feet of stormwater infrastructure, 23 new parking spaces, three new crosswalks. And it would be a total with the five existing, 15 new streetlights, bicycle safety lane markings and stream bank restoration at Flat Run Creek. The proposed project would reduce the instances of discolored water, limit the frequency of unexpected water shut offs for repairs, help bring the system into pressure compliance, reduce flooding in Flat Run Creek and improve public safety for the North Gate Residential Development who at times get entrapped in their neighborhood during large flooding events. The total estimated cost of the project is $2,662,613, of which the following would fund the project. The fiscal year 25 CDBG application, which this public hearing is for, $800,000. We have an MDE drinking water state revolving loan for $859,164. A MDE fiscal year 24 capital budget grant of $286,388. Town of Emmitsburg income contribution is 10,000 and that would just be staff time, printing mileage, etc. And then we are also planning to this month apply for a fiscal year 25 community legacy grant for the remaining $707,061. If awarded the grant funding, the project's proposed timeline is assuming is as follows, assuming a grand award in July 2024, we would have an environmental review in August and September. Requests for construction proposals would be advertised September to November. We anticipate awarding a contract hopefully in December this year. MD procurement review would occur December to January 2025. The construction period is anticipated to be 18 months and would occur February 2025 to August 2026. The project would be completed by September 2026. There would also need to be a second mandatory public hearing held in August 2025. The project timeline is subject to site adjustments and changes and will be publicly announced. The town, if awarded funding, has a 24-month implementation period for the grant. Now I'm going to discuss development, economic development and housing needs in Emmitsburg. So for local community development, in recent years, the town has undertaken dozens of steps towards improving local community development. Activities include, but are not limited to, new state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant in 2015. The town invested in solar energy in order to help power town-owned properties. Solar Field Number One was open in April 2014. Solar Field Number Two was open in August 2015. New ADA compliant playground was installed in Community Park in 2019. New LED streetlights and parking meters were installed this year in 2024. Since 2013, an ongoing sidewalk connectivity project has added at least eight new sidewalk connections in town. The town collaborated with SHA in 2016 to replace 4,700 feet of old curbs and sidewalks along Main Street and Seaton Avenue. The project also included renovating our historic town square. SHA constructed a new multimillion dollar bridge over Flat Run on East Main Street. Since 2013, we have documented over a million dollars of community legacy grant funds, Maryland Historical Trust grant funds, residence/business funds and town funds have been invested in improving our downtown facade. We have received numerous grants in order to improve our parks and pool house, such as the addition of a dock park and a disc golf course in Eugene Myers Community Park. Numerous wayside exhibits have been added to town in order to create a historic walking tour. We have planted dozens of trees and installed multiple recycling bins in our parks. Staff are currently working on adding a new restroom, concession stand. Staff are currently working on adding a new restroom concession stand building in the south of E Eugene Myers Community Park, and there are many more projects. For economic development, the town has seen a significant increase in economic development in recent years. More recently, we have seen, um, the new business of Gettysburg Smoothie Federal Stone is under construction. Penny Mart, which Nagila spoke about tonight, is a convenience store that's interested in opening a shop on East Main Street. Staff is currently reviewing an improvement in site plan for a distillery in East Emmitsburg Industrial Park. Mount St. Mary's University Nursing School is expanding to the Daughters of Charity East Wing. Daughters of Charity upgraded their Seaton Shrine Museum entrance. The town passed the floating zone ordinance in twenty twenty-three. Multiple developers are asking for information regarding annexing the Freely Farm into town and many more economic developments. Regarding housing needs, the town lacks affordable housing options such as duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes and townhouses. The town also lacks senior housing options. There are at least sixty-five lots available for residential building. Other community needs, the Creamy Road pump station replacement is currently under construction and is expected to be completed by the end of twenty twenty-four. The DePaul Street Waterline Replacement Project should break ground in July twenty twenty-four. The water treatment clarifier project should break ground this year, too. The town desires to continue to replace severely tuberculated water lines in our downtown. A new water treatment plant in Emma Gardens will also need to be constructed at some point in the future if development continues to rise. The amount of C D B G funds available for this fiscal year is eight million one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, seven seventeen, seventy-seven dollars, excuse me. Eight million one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, seventy-seven dollars. Okay, the range of activities that may be undertaken with C D B G funds. It's community development block grant program funded projects must be for eligible activities under program regulations and must meet one of the three national objectives. They must benefit persons of low and moderate income, eliminate slum and blight, meet an urgent need of recent origin that threatens public health and safety. Eligible projects generally fall into three types, housing, public facilities, such as water, sewer, streets, childcare, senior or community centers, and economic development projects. The draft application for this grant will be available to the public for review starting tomorrow at five P M. on our website at W W dot Emmitsburg M D dot gov. The application will be available for the public until Friday, June seventh at nine A M. We will also be accepting public comment during this time via email. You can email me at M S H A W at Emmitsburg M D dot gov, or you can also call the town at three oh one six hundred six three zero zero. That is the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you. That was a lot for your first meeting back afterwards. So thank you so much. Turning to fellow commissioners, are there any questions for the town staff? Commissioner Hoover.
Let me back up to the very first one. North Seaton Avenue on Waterline Two. If, uh, if I followed all that, because there's quite a bit there, but didn't begin it. So that project is planned to be, well, if everything's awarded, we would get a design built, design done and have construction ready to be awarded at the end of this calendar year. Is the, is the, is the plan?
Yes, that's what we're hoping. So then we would hopefully break ground beginning in next year.
In about eighteen month duration, eighteen or twenty-four month duration of the project itself. And then you said it had to have a twenty-four month information, implementation of the project or of the total payment full?
The grant has to be expended within twenty-four months or we could lose funding.
From the time of being awarded?
From the time we break ground. Oh, yeah, excuse me. Yes, from when it's awarded.
That's an aggressive schedule. So we don't have a design on that though yet or a plumber or anything yet, or do we?
It's in process.
I'm just curious how they're going to reduce the, the high water level there at, um, at the entrance of North Gate as that part of the project. I'm kind of, I don't see how that's going to happen, but.
Yeah, it's in the design phase. Yes, design phase right now.
Right. Even less for bringing the street level up. I don't know how we're going to do it.
I think they're going to put a ferry in there to cross.
But then we want high water. Okay, that was the only one I had question. I just think that's a, that's a damn aggressive schedule.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it depends on, on the state, particularly M D E, M D E and their review period. It's just something that we'll have to stay up, stay up on and if there's any pressure, then we'll probably call in the mayor to make some calls, keep them moving along.
Okay.
We can try.
I hope it all works. It's, it's a well, long overdue project.
Yes.
But that's like, like I say, though, that's an aggressive schedule. All right, thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Turquist?
Did we previously approve ARPA funding for the North Seaton Avenue?
Originally, um, it's been many months. North Seaton was on the ARPA schedule. But when the, I believe it was the clarifier bid and the DePaul Street Waterline bids came in higher than anticipated. It was not, and the timing, the big part is the timing because ARPA money has to be expended, completely expended by December of twenty twenty-six and has to be obligated by the end of December twenty twenty-four. And as Commissioner Hoover just pointed out, it's, we're going to be pushing to get it obligated by the end of the year. So we opted to move it to other projects.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? I have just one question. You spoke very fast, so I might have heard this incorrectly. So, um, you said that we would be applying for another grant, hopefully that would amount to another seven hundred thousand that is still to come. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Correct. Um, and that is agenda item number three. The resolution is for community legacy, which is due at the end of this month, and we're going to ask for the remaining project amount that we need with that grant application.
Okay, and if we don't get that grant application, I don't want to jinx it. I'm just trying to figure out what if.
There are other options to explore. Um, there's some funding through, um, there's some loan funding through, I think it's D H C D. We've dealt with them before and we'll just, we'll explore other options.
Just bring your checkbook, Gabby.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you.
We're going to do our best. Ms. Shaw is going to do her best.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Yes.
And also, not, not North Seaton, it also includes the, um, funding or, or request for funding for sewer plant. Did I hear you right? Sewer plant or water? I know you had Emma Garden, you talked about we need to do the Emma Garden Water Plant.
I think she's just, um, going over some of the projects that are on the, the horizon for, for the town. I think that's part of the requirement of the grant to talk about those.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, this time we'll turn to public comments. Um, I know, Mr. Sloan, you were holding out for public comment for this item, correct? You'll pass. Okay. Since we had a short sign up list, was there anybody else who wanted to offer public comment on this item? No? Okay. So, um, if no one else has anything more to present, the public comment period is now closed. And we need to do, have a motion to end the hearing. Uh, is there a motion to end the public hearing?
Some of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further discussion?
Before we end the hearing, do we need a particular motion on the grant itself to apply for or whatever?
I thought.
I think that's agenda item number two.
Right.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. The public hearing is now closed. And with that, we're moving to agenda item number two, which is approval of resolution twenty-four dash oh one R community development block grant. Submittal authorization for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project for consideration.
Thank you. This is just, um, the board needs to approve this for us to apply for the community development block grant. And as I mentioned with our last agenda item, we're requesting eight hundred thousand dollars for this grant.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments? No. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution twenty-four dash oh one R community development, development block grant? Submittal authorization for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash zero one R community development block grant.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item number three. Approval of the resolution twenty-four dash oh two R. Approving the community legacy grant application and receipt of funding for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project.
Thank you. So this is for the same project, the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement. And the amount that should be in the para, para F six on page forty-three is seven oh seven zero six one. And town staff is just requesting approval from the board so we can proceed with the application for this grant as well.
Do you need that amount listed in the motion?
I would, since it's, it's blank right here if you can make that amount.
What was the amount again? I'm sorry, Ms. Shaw.
Seven oh seven six four one.
Seven oh seven.
Zero six one.
Zero six one.
Zero six one. Okay. Do we need the, um, resolution read out loud? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty-four dash oh two R? Community legacy grant application and receipt of funding for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project for seven hundred and seven thousand and sixty-one dollars.
I make a motion to accept resolution number twenty-four dash zero two R. A resolution approving the application and receipt of financing for community legacy North Seaton Avenue improvements in the sum of seven hundred seven thousand sixty-one dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Any further discussions? Or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay, agenda item number four, for consideration, approval of a twenty-five-year revertible forest conservation deed of easement with the Daughters of Charity and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town. Oh. Is it requested postpone?
Yes, ma'am. That was the one we, it is not ready yet. We will, um, bring that back in July.
Okay, so we don't need a vote or anything. We can just move on?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Hold on to your hats. We're on to number five. All right, approval for the, of the bid for the construction of Rainbow Lake Parking Lot for consideration.
All right, this is the Rainbow Lake Parking Lot bid. So the project, the scope of work includes mobilization, maintenance of traffic, construction stakeout, sediment and erosion control, the construction of a ten space parking lot, including a stormwater management bio retention facility, asphalt pavement, site restoration, landscaping and other related items. The bid was published by the town on April thirtieth. The deadline was May twenty-first. Bids were opened by Ms. Lilitz, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Ruane and Joe C C, our engineer on the project on May twenty-first. The R F P was advertised as required for the town code. For this project, we have two grants. We have a program open space grant for seventy thousand dollars and a local playground infrastructure grant for forty-four thousand five hundred. The town is required to match twenty-five percent, which is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for a total amount of one hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred fifty. We anticipate our project expenses are engineering, which is a, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar one hundred ten contract with Fox and Associates, and then we anticipated a hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred forty for construction. On the following page, page forty-eight of the agenda packet, you can see the bid tabulation that was put together by our engineer. The lowest bidder for the project was Superior Facilities Management Services or S F M S L L C. Their bid price was a hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. And that is who town staff recommends for the project. On page, page forty-nine of the agenda packet, you can see, um, there's a letter from our engineer also recommending the same company. There was a typo in the bid packet and we did confirm that the one twenty-five, five, five, eight and sixty-nine cents was the correct amount and the bidder was okay with that. Are there any questions?
Questions, commissioners or comments?
Um, the required town match of twenty-five percent, um, thirty-seven thousand, what budget will that come from?
It was a previously approved budget transfer, so it's in fund two.
Fund two.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept the, sorry. I make a motion to accept the bid for the Rainbow Lake Parking Lot Construction as presented by Superior Facility Management in the sum of one hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars sixty-nine cents.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Right? Okay, number six, approval of the bid for the repair and construction of a multi-user trail, the red trail for consideration.
All right, thank you. So this project, um, has to do with our multi-user trails in our watershed, which has about thirteen hundred acres up there. The red trail loop and access trail, which are two point eight miles long, are currently impassable and need of improvement due to, due to trail damage from forestry work. For this project, the town is seeking bids to develop a modern, sustainable natural surface trail. Work would include redesigning approximately one and a half miles of the existing red trail and relocating one point three miles of damaged trail. Relocating a section of the trail will add point two miles of length, making the trail three miles long. The bid was published by the town on April nineteenth. There was a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting held on May third at three thirty P M. The bids were due on May seventeenth, uh, by four P M. and the bids were opened by Ms. Lilitz, myself and Mr. Ruane on May twenty-first. The bid was advertised as required for the town code. And our funding for the project, we have a fiscal year twenty twenty-four program open space grant in the amount of eight, eighty-five thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. The town match is ten percent of the project cost as required by the grant, which is nine thousand five hundred fifty. Town, um, at the bottom of the page fifty-one, you can see the four bids that the town received. Towns, and they're listed in alphabetical order. Town staff recommends Greenstone Trailcraft L L C with a bid amount of eighty-nine thousand six hundred twenty. They, um, are local, but they also had very favorable references and they were the lowest bidder. If awarded the bid, construction would start around October first and last twelve weeks. Due to hunting restrictions in the watershed, the contractor was actually requesting if they could draw out the completion of the project a little bit to April first, twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments from commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Is there, do I hear a motion for the approval uh, of the bid for repair and construction of the multi-user trail by Greenstone Trailcraft L L C in the amount of eighty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Is that correct? All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the red trail, multi, sorry, uh, Emmitsburg Multiuser Trail Red Trail Reconstruction. How do you want me to phrase this? I'm trying to figure this out. How do you want me to phrase this? I'm trying to figure this out. I'm sorry.
This was the name of the bid. Yeah, to use the, um, approve the bid for the Emmitsburg Multi-User Trail Construction.
Okay.
Um, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty for Greenstone, Greenstone Trailcraft LLC.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. I make a motion to accept the Red Trail Rebuild bid as presented by Greenstone Trailcraft LLC in the sum of eighty-nine thousand six hundred twenty dollars.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Does that work? Yeah, second. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Commissioner, uh, since we have Michelle in the hot seat right now, can we switch number seven and eight?
Might as well. We're on a roll.
There we go.
Yes. Um, so moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Approval of the Bid for the Site Work for the Restroom Concession Stand in Eugene Myers Park for Consideration.
Thank you. The, so for this, the bidder's scope of work includes all labor and materials necessary to complete the installation of a prefabricated concession stand building and restroom building, including but not limited to all associated site work, utilities, site restoration, related items. And if the board recalls, um, the, the purchase of the building was at the April town meeting, and so this is for the site preps, so when the building arrives, the building can be placed. The RFP was published by the town on April thirtieth. The bids were due May twenty-first by three P M. The bids were open May twenty-first at three fifty-five P M. by Ms. Willits, Ms. Shaw, Mr. Ruin, and our engineer, Joe C.C. The RFP was advertised as required per the town code. And there are several grants making up the funding for this project. We have, um, we have an LP, uh, fiscal year twenty-two L P P I grant for forty thousand, a fiscal year twenty-two POS, our Program Open Space Grant for a hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty. We have two fiscal year twenty-two L P P I grants that were left over funding from another project for twenty-two thousand two hundred ninety. We have a fiscal year twenty-three POS grant that was also left over. That was three thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents. We have a fiscal year twenty-three L P P I grant that was also left over. There's two projects for that year. That was eleven thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and seven cents. And then we just applied this year for another forty thousand with POS. And the required town match is twenty-five percent of the total project cost, which is eighty-six thousand four hundred seventy-four. Additional money is, is twenty-four thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and three cents for a total project cost of three hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars. The below that you can see the project expenses. We have the engineering contract and then construction admin contract. Electrical trenching is done. That was how much was billed. The pre-cut, prefabricated building, that's how much we purchased the building for, or the board did, excuse me, in April. Um, site prep, which is with the bidder that we are proposing, is aux construction for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. And then there would be two more items that we got estimates for that have not been billed, but we've been told by the contractor that those estimates are still good, and so the total price would match the funding. We received two bids for this project. One was aux construction for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred fifty, and the other one was United Enterprises Construction LLC. Our engineer reviewed the bid, and on page fifty-seven is his recommendation letter. He recommends aux construction, and so does town staff, because they are the lowest bidder. And on page fifty-six, you can see the site layout. The building's gonna go near the ball field in the south of the park. Is there any questions?
Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Turnquist?
Um, the required town match of eighty-six thousand, and then the additional town monies of twenty-four thousand. Will all of that money come from the SIP budget, and was it approved last year? Um, so yes, the Fund Two, um, the board has approved a couple different, uh, budget transfers for this project. One in the amount of eighty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-seven, and then another line item with fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen. There is a shortfall of seven thousand. However, there is excess money in Fund Two in parks that can be transferred to cover the remaining amount at a future time. Do you do have money in Fund Two that was already authorized?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That was helpful. Addition, yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Um, last meeting, second to last meeting, we approved the digital remote controlled locks for town restrooms. Did that include this, or will that be a future cost?
That's a future cost.
Okay.
Um, it's gonna be outsourced when we do the rest of them.
And anecdotally, I'll share that when I discussed that was potentially coming to, uh, with the, uh, the Fred Rock Disc Golf, uh, executives who I met with. They were very enthusiastic to know that a bathroom was coming closer and would be available. So, just anecdotally.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the bid?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the Eugene, Eugene Myers Community Park Bathroom Concession Stand and Site Prep Work as discussed and presented tonight.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. That was a lot. Uh, we are backtracking to number seven for consideration, Approval of Ordinance twenty-four dash oh four, Adoption of Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five, Town of Emmitsburg Budget. Just a second. I'm all out of order again. I just have to get back to it. Page fifty-three. Thirty-three?
Fifty-three.
Oh, I was supposed to say, okay. Thank you. Okay. Let me just, I do, do we need to read this, or?
So, this ordinance basically is required by your code to adopt your fiscal year twenty-five budget. Since the last meeting, I believe, uh, Kim has sent out, um, some of the minor changes when the, uh, water sewer operator was moved. Home department was moved from water to sewer. And then there was a breakout of the C I P Water and Sewer Budget. That's the only changes since our previous meeting.
Thank you. Um, what I'm going to do is ask for a motion so we can bring into discussion or question. So is there a motion? Is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash oh four, Adoption of the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five, Town of Emmitsburg Budget?
So moved. Okay.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. This time, questions or further discussion as it relates to the budget?
Yeah, I, I have something.
Okay, Commissioner Turnquist?
Um, so the first part of the budget, you know, two new positions were, um, requested as part of the budget. One for the main office, and then one for water and sewer. And I fully support those two positions. I think they're desperately needed. To help with staffing and priorities and projects that we have ongoing. You know, I prepared a, a little statement because I wanna make sure I, I cover, hit all the points, all the highlights. So I'll just read that for the record, if that's okay. Um, when I campaigned for the town council, I promised transparency and fiscal responsibility. I try my best to make informed decisions and consider the impact of those decisions on our community, our residents, and our business owners. There are many factors to consider in approving the fiscal year budget, which are outlined in the town's charter and code. My reservations in approving the FY twenty-five budget have not been fully addressed. The town has put forth much effort into providing additional information required by the budget process. But I feel we haven't gone far enough. Some of the items not identified are the financial policies of the town, details of capital projects, and projected costs for the remainder of the current fiscal year. These requirements are critical in determining our budget allocations, expenditures, and prioritizing our capital projects for the next five years. The budget also includes a second round of water and sewer rate increases. While I understand the need to increase rates, increases of such a magnitude are not sustainable. Families are struggling to meet basic necessities, and these increases have the greatest negative impact on our low-to-middle-income families and our seniors on fixed incomes. If we don't do a better job in planning and use, using our resources effectively and efficiently, and taking a longer-term approach as required, it will become increasingly more difficult to maintain a standard of living here as well as attract residents and businesses to our town. I think we owe it to our community to find better solutions, and I think by working together, we can do that. So for these reasons, I cannot approve the FY twenty-five budget as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Turnquist. Just to piggyback on that, I know that there was a lot of discussion leading up to this about the water rate increases, and we had several workshops talking about it as far as what to do, and at what point do we go back and look at the data, and I think, um, it would be appropriate for us, once we have a year's worth of data, which is, uh, what was mentioned before, to come back and have a special workshop in August, if we can just schedule that ahead of time. I wonder, uh, board members, if that's something that you would support moving forward, if we have a year's worth of data that we have a special workshop that we can come back in August and, um, continue the discussion. Uh, because, like you said, Commissioner Turnquist, uh, we did say we wanted to come, the consensus was to come back at a year and still have that discussion, so, so that it doesn't fall through the cracks. Is that something that we can, is?
We would actually need September. If you can, can hold off till September, because the fiscal year ends in July, or the end of June, you need at least a good month, month and a half for all the revenues to come in, all the expenses to allow all the, the journal entries and everything. If, if it can wait till September, I think Kim and I would be better prepared and have a better chance to review everything as it comes in.
Okay, so mid-September?
I'm good with September. I just, I'd like to see it as a single agenda item for that meeting, though.
Yes, like, nothing else added to it.
As a workshop.
As a workshop.
That'd be my, 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 my desire.
Absolutely. Does that sound good? Okay. Um, just getting that ahead of time, because you're right, we want to come back. We wanna do our due diligence. So, September, and maybe we can find a date later. I don't know. We need to identify one right now. Okay. All right, thank you. Um, additional questions, comments regarding the budget? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I, I just wanna, um, let you know that we did, uh, Ms. Muncher and I met with Commissioner Turnquist, and had a, had a very good meeting. Uh, she brought some, some valid points out with the outline of the, the budget and things that haven't been followed in the past. And that goes back as far as Commissioner or Mayor Hoover. Uh, no, uh, being our first, our, our first budget, uh, we used that template. And, um, you know, as, as we looked into the charter and the ordinance further, there are some things missing. And, uh, we have assured Christopher Turnquist that they would be taken care of, uh, for the next budget year.
Thank you, Mayor. Additional comments? Uh, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Sure, a, as a reassurance, um, I have great confidence that staff came forward with tremendous due diligence to prepare the budget. Um, I also know that we're humans, and therefore there is a distinct possibility that what we do is not perfect all the time, and as a result of that, if we are dissatisfied with the budget moving forward as a board, we always have the option to amend it. So, even if there are mistakes that are intended, which I doubt, or unintended, which could be certainly be there, uh, we always have the capacity to amend, and that's something as a board we should not forget as we advocate for all members of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? No. There was a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, if there are no additional comments or questions, um, no? Okay. Um, do I need to repot, repeat the motion again? No? Okay. So, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All against, please say nay.
Nay.
Um, so that's, uh, motion carries four to one with Commissioner Turnquist, um, against. Okay. And that brings us to setting the agenda for the next meeting, July fifteenth.
Actually, we have that, uh, Mount Saint Mary's E-Wing.
Oh, gosh. I'm sorry. It's not on the list.
No, it's, it didn't make the list, cuz it was.
I know. I'm sorry. I get.
I'm sorry. I followed this list religiously, and then I get, you know.
All right. I live and breathe by that list. Um, the Mount Saint Mary's E-Wing, would you? Are we turning it over to Najila? Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, so, uh, this agenda item is a stormwater deed of easement, uh, between the Daughters of Charity, the Grand Tour, and the Town of Emmitsburg, the Grand Key. This legal document, excuse me, the legal agreement is for the Mount Saint Mary's Nursing School located at the Daughters of Charity's E-Wing property. Um, the project consists of, uh, the demolition of some existing pavement and drop-off of new sidewalks, landscaping, and stormwater management V M Ps. Um, so the deed of easement grants, um, certain rights over the property, uh, for the purposes of managing stormwater. So, uh, basically, the Daughters of Charity will have to, uh, have the ability to not do any type of work, uh, on the easement without the town's vision consent, consent. And, uh, the town will have the right to enter the easement for inspections. Um, this is a very, um, standard, uh, deed of easement that, um, uh, that establishes that the property owner will be responsible for any required maintenance. Um, and this is a required component of the permitting process. The improvement plan was approved by the town in January of this year, and it'll be approved by the county one this, once this, uh, deed has been recorded. So, um, before it gets recorded, it'll require the board's approval as its, uh, legal agreement.
Thank you. So it sounds like this is just bringing it in line with the other stormwater management easements that we have. It's, yeah, okay. Um, thank you. Additional questions, comments?
Has the Planning Commission approved this deed of easement?
Oh, so the board approves deeds of easements and not the Planning Commission. We just.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't vote twice on it.
Additional questions? Should we wait for Commissioner Hoover?
I'll just throw in on the idea, um, to give him a little time, a margin. The Daughters have been, uh, a good neighbor in the community, and to see the building adaptively reused and to bring life over there is a very positive thing for our community. Um, I don't feel like we're rubber stamping this or rolling over for some un, some, some heavy ask that's extraordinary. Um, so I really think this is a really good thing to do, and in support of what's happening over with the Daughters Facility, I think we're hopefully gonna take. in support of what's happening over with the daughters facility, I think we're hopefully going to take the right step and vote in favor of this. Mr. Hoover, welcome back.
I think it's a, an exciting opportunity to bring in a purpose to that E-Wing and to partner with Mount St. Mary's, I think just makes sense. Um, additional comments or questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the deed of easement and maintenance for the Mount St. Mary's University E-Wing entrance stormwater management? Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none at this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. It's now we're ready for setting for next agenda. So it's July fifteenth and not, yes.
Yes, okay. All right. It was a decision made towards the end of last calendar year. I don't remember what meaning it was done at, but because of all the.
Because of the holidays. Yeah, okay.
So I have four things.
Okay.
Um, number one will be the for consideration approval of a twenty-five year revertible forest conservation deed of easement with the Daughters of Charity and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town. Number two will be discussion related to impact fees and water sewer connection fees. Number three, for discussion and consideration, approval of ordinance twenty-four dash oh six. Amend Emmitsburg Town Code two point two eight oh three oh titled election filing of candidates. And number four, for consideration, approval of resolution twenty twenty-four oh three R community legacy grant application and receipt of funding for the facade improvement program.
And that's what I have. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else that, uh, we needed to add to the agenda for that month? Okay. Um, is there a motion to accept the agenda for July fifteenth as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Commissioner Turnquist. Thank you. Um, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay. And with that, I think there, we're just moving on to motion to adjourn, correct?
Yeah, you got, yes, then you got much signatures.
Signatures, but do we do that after? Yeah, we'll sign after.
So our next meeting is not July fifteenth?
Correct. That's what I'm understanding. Next meeting is July fifteenth.
Vacation.
It feels strange. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Boomer, there's been a request for a Zoom closed meeting in regards to the hiring of the town operations specialist.
Okay.
Uh, the mayor's has requested to set a date and time for that meeting.
Oh, okay, so we do that right now?
Yes, that way you've done it in open session. You can vote and then we can.
No, we can do a Zoom. Um, or, um, board members, is that okay? Zoom for closed session for approval of personnel?
I think it's fine. We've done them previously during COVID. Um, you can have restricted access on Zoom. It's okay.
Is the date during M M L or something or?
I don't, did we pick a date yet?
Nobody's picked a date yet.
That's what I'm, are we just looking to reserve the right to be able to do this or confirming the right that, or the action?
Actually setting the, the date and time.
Gotcha.
Because there's nothing else, there's nothing else for the agenda.
Okay.
If you do it by Zoom.
I need to look at my calendar.
During the day or evening, night? I'm pretty good at four thirty A M.
I'm sorry, did you say it's for one or two positions? Just the operation?
It'll just be for one right now.
What's the soonest you can do it? What's the soonest you'd be able to do that? We still kind of start from there.
How soon do you want to do it, Mr. Mayor?
I'm good tomorrow morning, four thirty A M.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, I think we will be ready. Whenever.
Okay. Um. I mean. It's fine. It's fine. Um.
If we want to do it this week, I'm free Tuesday, Wednesday.
Uh, it depends on the time Tuesday, Wednesday, or what time it could.
I'm not available the fifth. I will tell you that.
Okay, what, what time on Tuesday, what would we be looking at? Like, like four, three thirty?
Can we do it next week?
Can we do it next week, said Commissioner Sweeney?
So we have two more meetings tomorrow and Wednesday, but.
I'll just put this out there. We are so desperate for help in this office. I really don't want to wait.
Split you into thirds.
Another week. Yeah, four thirty A M. Works for me.
Cliff, what time, what time are you able to get on the call? I know you got to go with the road as well.
Today, I think at home at five thirty. So mine's not set, so sometimes three, four thirty, sometimes five thirty. Depends on if we have an emergency to go to or.
Can you do something like three or three thirty though? I don't know why you're still down the road or you get.
No, I don't have, no, I don't have service most of the time. I look at city. Right now, I'm in middle of a little city.
It's a big project. I'm ready tomorrow.
Could we do it seven P M. Tomorrow night?
We can do it after this.
Is that too late for the board?
That works for me. That works for me. If we do seven P M. Tomorrow.
Mr. Sweeney?
Since it's first.
I have another meeting at seven, but I'll, I'll just drop my stuff off to them and then I'll just come up here.
It'll probably take.
That's all right. I'll, I'll just drop my stuff off to them. They, they can have the meeting without me. I'm the treasurer of the, the S A L, so.
Seven, seven thirty?
Seven thirty would be better.
Seven thirty? Is that too late?
It's fine by me.
Okay.
I can do both of them.
Thank you.
There you go. That would be, don't split them. Okay, seven thirty.
I'll just check a TV.
I have to write it on my hand.
Staff will send out the Zoom link, uh, tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And, and then also post it.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Are we done? Now I can call for adjournment? Nope, one more? Oh, okay. Okay, so tomorrow, Tuesday, seven thirty, closed session for the purpose of, uh, personnel. All right, at this time, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
They moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoover. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Uh, meeting ends at eight thirty-seven.
Write that down. Write that down.